January 23 Grafton Public School Committee Meeting. I'm calling this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment of silence for Anthony Putnam. He is a young student that we tragically lost. We are sending our love and thoughts to his family and to the Grafton community. Thank you, and please keep Anthony and his family in your thoughts and prayers. I don't have a chairperson's report. I don't think we have any public comment, but I will call. Do we have any public comment? No. Great. Then I am very pleased to present our executive board of our Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We have Nicole Prus, Joanne Rosalie, and Stella, I don't know if I've ever even said your last name out loud. Stella Varlastikas?
Yes, Varlastikas.
Varlastikas, thank you. I always just, no, we're Stella. We are so glad to have you here. Welcome. So I'm going to turn it over to you. Thank you so much.
Awesome, thank you. I'm Nicole Prus. I'm the chair of CPAC. But we have a little presentation we wanted to go through with some updates and changes this year that we've kind of revoted. Stella is from the previous board, carried over, but Joanne and I are new. So we kind of made some changes to some things this year, so we want to present on them. So again, I'm Nicole. This is Joanne, our secretary, and this is Stella, our treasurer.
All right. So our mission statement, carried over from previous administrations, last, sorry, last one. So it just says, fueled by love and advocacy for our own children with special needs, the Grafton CPAC aspires to positively influence the best educational outcomes for all children with special needs, a collaborative partnership with the Special Education Department, school committee, and the Grafton community. We hold regular, scheduled interaction with the Special Education Department and school committee when CPAC advises on issues, questions, areas of opportunity related to special education, and supportive resources and mentors for families with children with special needs.
So these are just meetings for the remainder of the year. This Friday, we actually have our first ever Coffee and Conversation. I went to the Mass Pack Chairperson Training recently, and a big input they had was other time opportunities to get families together besides the formal meetings. So this was something we are trialing this Friday at the library from 10 to 12. And it's going to be just parents, nothing formal, no agenda or anything, just an open conversation. And then Thursday, February 8th, we have our next meeting slash training session for families about mediation and facilitation from the BSEA. And then March 14th, we have our ESY Info Session, which is, I think we're going to do hybrid. And then April, the ever-weighted new IEP Parent Orientation. And then in May, we will have our Everyday Heroes presentation with more info coming on that. We are looking to schedule additional Coffee and Conversations, but we don't have the dates yet.
Put it on you. Sure. So I'm Joanne Rosalia, and I'm the secretary. And Nicole referenced the Coffee and Conversation. The idea for this is to facilitate conversation amongst parents in their, and the ultimate goal is to have people with, who have certain, you know, kids with similarities to leverage each other, communicate, see how are you doing, what are you doing, how are your communications ever, you know, resources? And really just have more of an informal conversation. The library seems like a great central place to leverage. We have a couple conference rooms there, anticipating maybe there'll be overflow needed. So we're optimistic, and we'll do a, what went well, what could be better afterwards, and, you know, for the next one that we schedule. So we're pretty excited about bringing that to CPAC.
And last year, this is some of the topics that we had addressed. I was actually the chairperson last year. So we did just the expected communication chain for parents who we should leverage first. And then we discussed literacy programming. We had just understanding inclusion in the classrooms in schools. We reexamined the CPAC bylaws because they were fairly outdated, so we updated them. And then one of the biggest changes was the change to the elections. We used to have them in April. Everyday Heroes would happen in May, so we moved them to a June election, just to keep it the board throughout the entire school year. And then we just continue to support our teachers, paraprofessionals, and staffs, reward, you know, anybody through Everyday Heroes, and then just, we want to increase our visibility and involvement and interactions with parents.
And then this year, we updated our CPAC website, you know, a brand-new website, and we have a new updated board. We did a presentation on the IEP Basic Rights Process. We're looking to increase our membership and participation. We did some work on tiered focus monitoring, including an interview with us from the T, sorry, the TFM. And we are doing the mediation facilitation, the new IEP, and then again, the Everyday Heroes, which we're excited to have in person. So we made, kind of remade our website. It is still linked on the Grafton site under the CPAC section. So on the margin, we have our calendar of events, where it's linked straight to Google. There's a link at the bottom of the page where you can add the events to your calendar.
That we can't forget?
Yeah. We have our meeting agendas and notes linked here. We have our etiquette and expectations for meetings about being confidential, proper language and such. We have some links to resources. We're open to adding more if you have any issue. We're working on actual pictures, so this is just our interim. And then we have a link back to the GPS website.
And then last year, when we came and presented, we did Everyday Heroes afterwards, usually held in May. So this year, we had, or last year, we had 37 nominations. We actually had three students nominate, so we don't require any payment from the students. We had two community members that were recognized, and then we created some, you know, just to make it more fun, to do like video submissions. So we had one. And then we partnered with Bread Guy Bread for the gift back to them. So it was nice to have that as well. And then we are excited to bring it in person this year, hopefully have it at the auditorium and kind of get back to what it was pre-COVID.
And this is just our contact page, the website, email, and then we have two different kind of Facebook platforms, the CPAC Community Group and then our main CPAC group page.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Do we have questions for them from the committee or comments? Leora?
Thanks for coming, guys. This is great. Great presentation. I guess I would start with, what resources do you need? Or what can we be doing as a school committee to be supporting you or getting more people involved? I know that, you know, you sort of always joke that people come to CPAC meetings when they have problems as opposed to when things are going well. So how can we help sort of?
I guess just spread the word on our different meetings and trainings and such.
And probably, like, some of the training resources have been shared. It is difficult to see how, who they're shared with, but with what schools, but for parents to register based on their interest of other resources that are out there. There was one just now that was days long, and I know, you know, we registered for it and got something out of it. So it's kind of a lot of word of mouth based on all the resources that are out there.
And our participation seems to be from like the lower, like the elementary schools. So we don't have a lot of participation in the middle and high school, which kind of was reflected in the Everyday Heroes, like the number of, you know, the elementary schools had the most awards versus the middle and high school. So Joanne, your son is in high school?
Yes.
Yeah, in high school.
He's a freshman.
Yep. Next year I'll have a middle school, so we'll kind of have some ballots, and then he'll be still in the elementary schools for a little bit.
We also talked to Nicole about ways that we can send event things out to families more directly than just the blast, either through the team chairs or principal newsletters or things like that, so.
And is there anything you'd want us to know in terms of things that are challenging or, you know, things that are happening from a special education standpoint or an inclusion standpoint where we could be more helpful? Or you'd want to bring light to anything?
Well, I mean, the only thing that came up at my chair meeting was that more casual conversation time. We love our administration, but a time without administration for parents to chat? Because I think that sometimes they don't want to unmute and chat at CPAC meetings because they don't want to be open and candid kind of thing. One thing that came up as well in the training was outreach to families whose students are outplaced, because often they don't get the principals newsletters or know that they can come to our meetings and that they have the right to attend functions and events at their home school. Not necessarily during the day, but more like, you know, dances and functions and such. So that was one of the topics that came up in the chair meeting.
And Nicole has been, McDonald's has been extremely helpful. And, you know, she helps us with the numbers a lot. I think, you know, when that came up, it was, what is it, 800 and some odd kids on 504s and IEPs. 30 of them are out of district. So that helps us to put some effort against it, but also understand it's not the lion's share. It's important, but, you know, to kind of make sure that we're putting our energy in the right places.
I mean, I think just as far as support, I think we really want to be emphasizing our Everyday Heroes this year. And I know there was something last year where we kind of ran out of funds and weren't able to engrave the plaques.
Yeah, so we're still working, we're still working on that. Because like, even though I'm treasurer, we don't really like take in any money or do like any fundraising. So all the money that's raised from the nominations, like usually just goes back to them in a gift. So we actually, we had some money left over from prior years CPAC, but we used that up for the engraving, so we kind of are left now with, we have to like close that account and the money that was drained. So we just need a way to like be able to set aside the, like, money for the engraving, but also like, you know, give them back a gift. So we did raise the amount we were collecting from last year from $20 to $25, and then gave them $20 back in a gift card. And then the other monies kind of went to like making the plaques and the actual take-home gift.
And also to consider is that if we want it in person this year, there might be some cost to hosting that as an event, so.
In the past, we, CPAC used to come to us and we would give a donation from, I don't know, I don't know where it came from, because I was new and I probably.
I can look, I vaguely remember.
So there has been discussion, sorry to interrupt everybody, but there's been discussion on the MASC chat about having online item in our budget for CPAC. It's like most, looks like districts have about $500 or so. Because you're supposed to, you are an advisory to the school committee, so we should look at that now that we're talking about budget. It's not a lot of money, but you shouldn't be, yeah.
That we would like to get membership, I'm not membership, but participation and not focus on fundraising.
Right. That's not, that's not what you are. You're not a fundraising organization, you know, you're a first parent. So I have more to say, but I'll let my committee if they have things to talk about.
No, I was just, I was kind of focused on this too. I was, you mentioned a couple of things that you have to pay for. I just wondered if you had a, if you had a budget or an estimate of what your costs will be for this year's event.
No, we'll have to do some more research on that.
Okay, okay.
But wasn't really.
But the engraving costs had gone up from like year to year. So one of the things we want to like look at is like, you know, maybe, so it's not just like a flat fee because, you know, sometimes it's just adding a year onto somebody's plaque already. Actually, Milbury Street is filled up, so they'll actually need a new board as well and, you know, additional plaques. So there's just a little bit more to go into it. So we have to actually like take them physically down, figure out the spots and how many we have, and then probably get it quoted out to figure out what we need.
It's my understanding too that in past years when it was in person, there were some sponsorships from local businesses. They would be in the program, and they could, they provided funds for some of that. So I think some of the money that was in the account came from those sponsorships. So just another.
But at least the facility would be free.
Right.
You don't have to pay the rental of the facility.
I can connect you with some of the people that used to really run it when it was in person. I'm sure costs have gone up.
Yeah. No, it wasn't in person, no, but, but I got, when we became chair, Heather and I, we got a lot of guidance from Laura and Leslie.
Leslie, that's who I was thinking too. Yeah, yeah.
So we can help connect you with those folks.
Just let us know when that is.
That she did. May 9?
Oh, it was on your schedule?
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully we can get the. Totally did not see the.
The auditorium at that time.
I thought it was a meeting about Everyday Heroes. I totally, all right. I get it.
That's just the way it's listed in Google.
Yep, nope.
At the 7th or the, I can't see.
We'll take an action.
Parents Day, May 9.
And we can help.
And estimate.
Yeah, and we usually have it starting at like 6:30, but I just didn't know if like the, you know, if the high school's taken at that time. I know it's a busy time of year for events.
Any other questions, comments?
I just wanted, oh, sorry.
I just had something to.
Yes, of course.
Another way that potentially you could help is we are working on outreach and, you know, marketing materials to, you know, we feel that some people don't know what CPAC is. They don't, you know, who are we, what do we do, why are we important, why should they participate? And so we're working on that and leveraging some of the other, you know, materials that might exist or collateral. But any materials you see or have seen in the past that you feel are good or that you'd like to share, we'd love to, we'd love to have those. We have a drive where we're sharing, where we're saving things and sharing that and kind of keeping a central repository.
Or any additional resources you want me to link on our website?
And one of the things we did last year during ESY is like sent home an actual physical, like invite to our September meeting. So that way, because all the, mostly the ESY kids were either on IEPs or 504s, so it was just a way of just getting the word out of like our new term of meetings. So didn't draw too many new faces, but we've had new faces this year. You know, people are just getting on IEPs, checking it out. So I think it is type of a thing that people kind of come with questions or, you know, they might need some guidance of what to do next. Because, you know, it's kind of new when you don't have a, you know, when you've never done this before. You just, you know, I've kind of leaned on other moms too to ask questions, so it's helpful.
Well, I want to just thank you all. I love the idea. I saw the coffee when you posted it, and I think that's fabulous. I hope it's successful. And even if, I think, just keep trying them as they, as word gets out. But I know that a lot of people are interested, and it's a great opportunity for them to just really talk and lean on other parents and caregivers. And I wanted to thank you because this is a volunteer job, and you're doing a great service to the community. And Stella, you're staying on for more terms, so that's great. And just know you're appreciated. Like I said, you are supposed to be an advisory, so if something comes up, if there's something that we've put out, a policy or something, I mean, we're lucky. We have, Leora's got a good eagle eye for that type of thing, and we try really hard to engage Nicole. But if we miss something, just come to us. Like, I love a partnership, a true partnership between us to make sure we're doing everything we can for our students. Thank you for coming out in the snowy evening. Drive carefully, please.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Okay. And now I'm very excited to introduce our new principal. He's probably not quite so new anymore because it's January. Mr. Chris Starcheski for Grafton Middle School. I love that you're already in the Grafton green, like phenomenal. I do notice those types of things. We're really glad to hear, to have you and excited to hear what's going on at GMS these days.
Oh, thanks very much, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, administration, and Grafton Public. It's my pleasure to be representing some information tonight on the state of Grafton Middle School. As most often mentioned, I'm brand-new to the district, July 1. It's been an absolute whirlwind of learning, not only the school-based activities, but the community as a whole. And I have to say that I'm very proud to be a member of the Grafton community because it allows me to put to work, you know, years as an educator and years as an administrator in a new environment that really embraces the business of teaching and learning. We've got such a great story to tell, and I'm very excited to be able to share a little bit about where we're at tonight with you. So why we do what we do, there it is, up on the screen. We're responsible for taking two elementary schools in two separate sections of the town where students may or may not be acquainted with one another from athletics, maybe scouting groups, maybe church groups, maybe other social playdates and the like. But we're really taking those two elementary buildings and merging them into one Grafton community. And right from the get-go, at the start of this year, we talked with our faculty and staff about relationships before content, and the goal being those first three days of that short week that we went into a long weekend for. Let's just focus on building community, strengthening relationships, setting expectations, and building tone of expectation. And it's something that has definitely paid off. We have, I don't think we have any. I used to go to Milbury Street School. I went to North Grafton. I don't see any of that, I don't feel any of that. I see students engaging with one another in the cafeteria, in the hallways, in the classrooms as one, which is really important because as middle schoolers, we know that young adolescents can be a challenging and trying time. Some find their cliques, some find their peer groups, some have multiples. And it's our job as educators to really honor that and encourage some risk-taking and broadening of that experience as much as possible. But the faculty and staff is the fabric that really holds tight the community. Just wanted to share some of the names and faces of the newest members of the team who joined this year. We had Ms. Holly Gurwe, who's paraprofessional in our PALS program. She came in and has just been a great, a great force of stability and consistency with our kiddos. Mr. Anthony Kissel joined the team. He actually wasn't my hire, but I'm envious that I didn't get a chance to hire him. He was hired just prior to my joining the Grafton team. He's a school adjustment counselor, and his ideas have really allowed our student support team to take hold and take flight in a lot of ways. I give them a lot of ownership, and we'll talk a little bit more about them later. Mrs. Lisa Petritas, you might recognize her name from elementary and previous middle school. She came over to our building this year and is working in our Special Education Department, having had prior middle school experience and really strong relationships with many of our kiddos from north. Theodora D'Angelo joined the office team as our administrative secretary. And she has, much like myself, had an exceptionally steep learning curve, but she has created some real strong stability in our main office alongside Ms. C. Ms. Katrina Houston, she's another paraprofessional who joined our PALS program. Strong, caring, meaningful aspirations to be a pre-K educator, and just soaks up knowledge from her colleagues as well as from teachers from outside of the program. Colleen Worenga is another local name from Grafton. She joined our team in the PALS program as well. Exceptionally patient, exceptionally caring, and exceptionally focused on expanding our inclusive model with students who are in our PALS program. James Briand, if you get a chance to go see one of our concerts, you're going to see him up there. He's a gentle giant. He's got a quirky, quirky sense of humor, but he's exceptionally talented. And after the kiddos learned a little bit more about who he was in gen music and in chorus, they find him funny, and as opposed to just quirky. But he's a, he's a great talented educator who's looking into broadening our performing arts program on the vocal side. And lastly, Ms. Melissa Barubi, she joined us, our team as a paraprofessional this year. She's a credentialed math teacher who is getting back into the game of education, and she's providing some tremendous support and resources to our team. And I didn't bother putting my picture up here because, well, you know, here I am. So just some members of the team. And I only wanted to share the newest members because I could go through and do a little biopic on everyone who contributes. But I'm a big believer in hiring for fire. That's what I call my hiring process. I try to find folks who are passionate, who are very invested and interested in taking our school and their school to the next level. And I really want them to own things. So I'm very proud of the members who joined our team in recent, and anybody coming down the pike. And the goal is always to continually move forward. And these team members are certainly worthy of that movement. So today's story, in short, I just wanted to share a little bit about our pillars, which basically are our core values, responsibility, respect, kindness, and gratitude. It doesn't mean our kiddos are going to be perfect with these. It just means that we're going to focus on these. Our foundational element, of course, is academics. We're a school. But our job is to really create productive, responsible citizens who are capable of going out and shaping and changing the world. We've got a couple of student reps on school committee, and I hope to hear your voice because you were awfully quiet earlier. But the idea that we've got these student reps who have voice are great examples of what it takes to put yourself out there, take some risks, and model these values in front of others. There will be times with this committee where there's disagreement, but you're going to come at one another with respect. You're going to come at one another with kindness, and ultimately with gratitude for sharing contrary opinions. And then you recognize that there's great responsibility in the roles that you hold. We want those four values to become part of our children's fabric as they go out into the community and beyond. And I told the kids on first day, I said, yeah, you're Grafton Middle School students, but I guarantee you, if I hear about issues at the library or at Dunkin' Donuts or on the ballfields, you're representing the ideals of Grafton Middle School. And we're going to have a conversation about how you're representing that G. And we need you to be cognizant of that. And, you know, to date, yeah, I've had a couple of little tidbits of information about some bad decisions by middle school kids. They're middle school kids, but they've been really respectful and engaged with me in conversation. So that's been positive. I'd like to take you through a little bit of a chapter about building capacity to be better, talk a little bit about our program improvements this year, some of them, and a little bit beyond the school day. Grafton is rich in tradition of offering students a variety of activities to be engaged in beyond the classroom, and it's something I'm very proud of being a part of here. So we want to build capacity in our kids, and we've got some tremendous educators who I would consider to be experts in the field. I put a lot of faith and trust in them to plan together, to act together, to create alternative learning experiences together related to the academic achievement. They really are experts in the field, and I trust them, in the short time that I've known them, to make really good decisions related to that academic foundation that the kids need. Grafton's somewhat unique, for those of you who don't know the outside communities. We offer some real core academic competent classes at the middle level for all students that other schools do not. And that's something that I was surprised by, but quite impressed by. One example of that is world language, right? We have four world language teachers at the middle school, one essentially for each team. That allows almost 100% of the kids to take two years of world language by the time they go to high school. My previous school, my hometown school, where my son's currently a seventh grader. My previous school, my hometown school, where my son's currently a seventh grader, we have one world language teacher in a five-through-eight building. So, about 150 kids get language experience. And I consider Dudley Charlton to be a very strong academic program. So, I'm really proud of the academic base, and I just use world language as one of those examples. Next, we want our kids to learn empathy as they start climbing that mountain. We want them to understand others' perspectives, the ability to learn from others, the ability to sit in one another's shoes, so they can gain perspective. It's really important for us to have an outlook on inclusivity and diversity, and exposure to other mindsets, other belief systems. So, we understand we're one common, particularly with that one Grafton theme, but we're one common community that's moving forward together. We might have bad days, we might have great days, but we should be able to rely on the right and the left to understand where we are at that point in time. And that's a skill that emotionally develops over time. But if a whole school is focused on that, and the educators are reminding kids continually of that, we are all the better for it. Continuing the climb, being upstanders, being advocates, identifying when something is out of place, and speaking up, taking action, taking ownership of the environment. I can't police the entire caf-, well, I can, I've got a very loud voice, but I can't police the entire cafeteria of 180 kids at a time. If a tater tot's gonna fly, a tater tot's gonna fly. But if Johnny tells Billy to stop throwing the tater tot after the first one, his voice carries more weight than mine, because peer, we can call it pressure, in a positive way, is really smart. We want the kids to understand the difference between right and wrong. And again, it's middle school, we're gonna make mistakes. It's a safe place. But we want the kids to be upstanders and take ownership of our building. And you'll hear a little bit about that when we talk a little bit about student leadership and advocacy in a little while. We wanna build strong citizens, I mentioned this earlier. We want the kids to understand the ins and outs of the local process in government, the bigger pictures of government. We want them to stand in, if they're not willing to say the pledge out loud, at least stand and provide respect for that opportunity and that option. We had a great Veterans Day assembly, where we had some wonderful speakers from the community come in, and you couldn't hear a pin drop with our kids, as these vets of the Korean War and Vietnam were talking to them about the importance of Veterans Day, and what it meant for them to have an audience of nearly 500, sitting in silence, listening to their perspectives, their experiences, and owning what it meant to be a strong citizen. These types of things aren't in the fabric of our typical school day, they're just how we walk and how we expect the kids to walk down the line. And of course, this is all to lend a goal of competitive advantage. Our eighth graders applied to BVT, some applied to St. John's, many are going to Grafton High School, some are going off to other private schools, you know, Bancroft and Worcester Academy, some are going to Pomford Academy, other students are looking to play hockey for St. Paul's, which is all fantastic, but in order to give them a leg up, a leg up comes from more than just academics. Academics can carry kids so far. My oldest daughter's a sophomore at Hofstra University, and she was just appointed, noted to be on the provost list, which is amazing. We value education as a family, but we also value education as a community, and that's something that I really feel Grafton does a great job with. And I think our, our students are set up for significant competitive advantage because of the opportunities that they have, because of the faculty gives, and gives, and gives. They are quite, quite impressive with what they offer. So, a little bit about the middle school day. This is gonna be a quick overview, those of you who've been through it before. We've got a seven, we'll call it a seven-period day, a seven-experience day. All students begin their day in a class called Flex or Enrichment, which is essentially kind of a win block, a what-I-need block. Students receive extra help in math or ELA, they go ahead and maybe complete homework, work on projects with their peers. In the enrichment side of that, they work with our related arts teachers in experiences that expand upon the actual grade-level curriculum in visual arts, performing arts, technology, education, so on and so forth. We also offer two classes for all students during that block of time, that are run by our counselors, Mrs. Marazo and Mr. Kissel. They run a class that's year-long, the kids rotate through in groups of seven groups. One is an SEL class, Social Emotional Learning class, which helps teach capacity building with managing emotions, navigating difficult peer situations. And the other is the SMARTS curriculum, which is more an executive functioning course, which teaches everything from organizing to short-term, long-term planning, to self-advocacy, if you're struggling with academics or really with anything. And then the rest of the day is filled with the academics of ELA, mathematics, science, social studies, and related arts classes, in addition to world language, which I mentioned earlier. These pictures are difficult to see, if you're not right on top of them, but in most of them, in the classrooms, you, if you could just envision, you know, students sharing, opinion-sharing ideas, working on those critical thinking skills, a lot of collaboration occurs at the middle level. The desks are shaped in a way, except for the science tables, that we can put small pods of kids together and engage in some really rich conversation. We ask students to rely on their peers, and a lot of teachers don't say this rule, but it's a rule I adopted many years ago, ask three and then me. If there's 25 kids in the class, it's easier to ask three peers rather than wait for me, the teacher who may or may not have the answer, to get there. This encourages conversation and higher levels of discourse. So, just a quick snapshot of the school day. Key improvements in 2324, English Language Arts, and you've heard this if you had an elementary presentation about curriculum update. The wit and wisdom is in the ELA classrooms. It is high-powered, impressive, quite honestly, program that really stresses reading of high, high-level text, and asks kids to engage in higher levels of discourse than other literacy programs. The pictures off to the side are actually of kids using a hexagonal brain map to address a question in the book Code Talkers in the seventh grade. That strategy was one that really none of the English Language Arts or special educators had actually used before. But what they found was when students put this map together, which a lot of times we don't think of manipulatives in the English Language Arts class, they put this map together of the hexagon, the kiddos had to explain the relationship between the connected sides in the hexagon to take through a map of the story. And as you know, a hexagon has six sides, so there were multiple opportunities based off of one map for kids to explain connections. They all didn't have to follow the same map. They were required to explain with textual evidence how the map progressed. Kind of a higher-level skill, sets the kids up for real high-level writing, even though it's not a true writing activity. In mathematics, we're currently piloting, and we expect a recommendation to come very soon for the next curriculum, set of curriculum materials. Seventh grade is piloting illustrative math from Imagine Learning, and eighth grade is piloting HMH Into Math. There are some pilots of these programs going on at the high school as well. So, we're looking at a vertical program, grades seven through high school, with these. Both are very high, high-quality instructional materials. They pass the CURATE stamp of green. CURATE is the Massachusetts DESI, Resource for Curriculum Validity, and meets expectations for the Massachusetts competencies. Our math teachers are really engaging in that pilot with tenacity, and they were partnering with the high school in a meeting coming up next Monday to talk about the pilots, and out of that meeting, we anticipate a recommendation for one of the two. Student leadership and advocacy. I don't think this is new, I think it's existed, I just brought my spin on it. I created a principals advisory group this year, and the principals advisory is made up of any student who is nominated by any peer or any teacher in the school. Twenty-seven kids were nominated and recognized, and about 15 attend the meetings when I have them, which is great. They'll be sending out invitations to members of this team to come to Grafton Middle School to hear a pitch, and their pitch is on how to make improvements to our student bathrooms and our locker rooms. We definitely will have Mr. Rothwell there, and I think we may need Kathleen, because she has a checkbook. But, the, the students are engaging, and I've been working on talking with them about communication and leadership. And I asked them to choose one of three projects to work on. They identified three ways to improve Grafton Middle School, and they focused on the bathrooms and the locker rooms. So, they created a presentation, they're meeting on Friday to finalize it, and then they're gonna send out invitations to members of this team and other members of the leadership in the district, so they can make their pitch and see where things go from there. But it'll be a great experience for them. What I found with that group is they're, they're very eager to move forward and, and become better, which is really quite cool. And I'm trying to build off the seventh graders, because they're gonna be my eighth graders next year to model and mentor my incoming sevens. Our student support team, I referenced the SMARTS curriculum and the SEL curriculum with Second Step a little while ago. Our student support team's comprised of, and this is not a new team, it's just new how it's being run. Mr. Kissel, Mrs. Marazo, Ms. Rachel Clark, our school psychologist, Mrs. Kaya, our school nurse, Ms. Gasper, our behavioral support up in the Lighthouse Program. We meet on a bi-weekly basis with, along with Mrs. Martellio and myself, and we talk kids. We talk what we need to do to shore up supports and resources. If a student is struggling academically, this is the team that, beyond the teacher class, the, the teacher teams, we're gonna make recommendations on what to do. This is the team that manages our attendance protocols and works with families on outreach. This is the team that hooks moms and dads or other caregivers up with community resources if a child is struggling, or if parents are going through a difficult time. These counselors aren't only on board, and this team's not only on board for our students and faculty and staff, but we're there to really build a strong bridge into the homes. And it's something I'm very excited about. I, I talk about them quite often, but I'm very proud of them. And then lastly, you know, thinking about the future, the district is thinking about artificial intelligence and educational applications. We do have some teachers who are taking some risks and thinking about that as well. Looking to make curriculum connections and pathways, future, future-ready middle schoolers. How do our programs connect to the high school pathways that exist? How do our programs connect to BVT experiences? How can we ensure that kids have what they need, whether it's at Grafton High, BVT, or elsewhere? Is our program satisfying the needs of our consumer, the, the next level? We're really looking at defining those pieces and flesh that out over time. And then, of course, BVT, I'm new. I don't know anything about our, our vocational technical school, so I really wanna be able to partner with them, so I understand a little bit about what their program is, and I can think about what our program may need to offer, and then work with my colleague at the high school, Mr. Carney, and then our district leadership to say, "Hey, have we ever thought about this program X that can satisfy an interest where kids might be able to maintain Grafton identity in high school and beyond?" So, just some, some of the work that we're doing, and I mean, we could go on for a long time, and I tend to be long-winded, so I'll move this along. But, beyond the school day, again, middle school is a time to explore and be yourself, but also take risks and not be yourself. We offer academic activities after school, we offer non-academic activities after school, we offer interscholastic athletics, club sports. We have ideas that kids propose, and we try and put something in place. We have curriculum-connected activities, and we have just pure plain social activities. But there really is something for everyone, I know that's kinda cliche. But, if a kiddo doesn't have an idea, like, one of our students is very interested in starting an archery club. Well, that's fantastic. I got a little bit of work to do on the liability side and the insurance side, to make sure we can actually have an archery club. But, just the fact that that student brought that forward in the form of a written proposal that said, "Hey, I'd really like to do this, I'm passionate about it", that tells me a lot. It tells me that they're comfortable and they're confident in, in making ideas. You know, horseback riding club, can we do these types of activities, so on and so forth. So, very proud of what we do and how we do it. And lastly, you know, just rounding out with pictures of our school day, you know, kids smile, they have fun. Now, there is a bit of teenage apathy, don't get me wrong, you know, "What'd you do at school?", "Nothing", "How are you today?", "Terrible", you know, that's all fine and good, and that's typical middle school. But, we catch more smiles, we catch more engagement, we catch more opportunities for kids to be better and be with one another throughout the day than you'd think. And, I start my day each day in the worst possible place, along with Dr. Cummings, the parking lot. But, you know, I got the music out there, I have fun, we give fist bumps, we talk with kids. It's my first way to do a check-in with them. And if something seems off, I know it's off, because I've seen them day after day after day. And that's not just me, I'm representing the entire faculty and staff, who are out and about in the mornings, trying to get to know the kids, trying to make sure the kids feel welcome each and every single day. And if they're smiling, it's great. If they're not smiling, my goal is to make sure that they can at some point in their day. So, best way to stay, get updated, just follow me on Instagram. Put a lot of stuff out there, and I do a little hashtag, Mr. Star in the Car. I have a truck now, but it still works. I do a lot of driving as a dance dad and as a sports dad, and I sit in the car. Sometimes I have thoughts to share with the kids. There's some good segments, go ahead, check 'em out, @GMSprincipal underscore principal on Instagram. Thanks for your time. Sorry I went a little bit long, but I was kind of excited about sharing some information with the program without going too far under the hood.
No, we're excited to have you. Thank you so much. I'll open it up to the committee and our students for questions. Liz, I see your hand first.
Welcome. So excited to have you here today. Firmly believe in the power of the fist bump. I, I noticed, in, in drop-off over the course of the year, I was mostly looking at my own daughter, and she was kinda, like, she'd walk by you and kinda go like, "Oh, weird." And, but recently, I saw her go out, and she's like, she's into it. She's like, and you've made that connection. You've, you've built that relationship, which is awesome, and I love how you're using that to make, to keep that connection with the kids and see, or be able to notice when things are off with them. That's, that's fantastic. How's the new bathroom working out? Great.
Fabulous.
I, I expected pictures of that to be on there. If anyone hasn't seen bathrooms at the middle school, or at least, is it just the one right now?
Well, we, we did three bathrooms over the summer. We did two staff bathrooms in the academic wing, and then we did a public bathroom down off the gym. So, those of you who may be going to vote there in the upcoming primary election, you will notice a phenomenally designed restroom on the left side. The right side is still a work in progress.
If you wanna see, remind yourself what the old one looked like, you can go see that one.
Yeah, I do have before and after photos. I, I did not promise Mr. Rothwell that I wouldn't include physical plant stuff in here, but it was kind of an agreed piece I would stay away from.
I had a question about, let's see, where do I wanna start? So, the student leadership volunteers, which, the, the, or the student leadership program, that sounds amazing, it sounds like the kids are really getting a lot out of it. I just wondered if you'd given any thought to, I know you had nominees for those, and 15 out of 27 were kind of regularly showing up. Any thought to kind of opening it up for some kids who maybe are kind of quiet, and teachers might not think of nominating them, but they are.
Yeah, I actually had, of the 27, I think there were nine kids who self-nominated.
Oh, they did, they should, they came.
Yeah, and I, when I, when I put that form, nomination form out, I encourage them, you know, nominate a peer, nominate yourself. Yeah.
Okay, perfect, perfect.
And I, I don't have a closed membership. If a kid sees me in the caf, and they're like, "Hey, I wanna come on Friday morning", yeah, come on.
Awesome, okay, I love that. Let's see, and regarding the Flex time, have you given any thought to moving that to the end of the day? I know it's been talked about before.
Grenade question.
Have you, is that then a grenade question? Is it not a good idea, or is it?
It's a great idea, and it's a horrible idea.
It's a horrible, okay, tell me, yeah.
No, there, there's, there's ongoing discussion about it.
Yeah.
I think that the movement to the beginning of the day was smart, in that it provides kiddos an opportunity to start their day outright, after, you know, maybe haven't had a struggle preparing for a test that's coming up that morning. They can start fresh in the morning. That said, the end of the day, if they have questions throughout the day, they can get their teacher before they go home to study, as an example. I, I think for next year, we are looking at the placement of Flex, and it's an ongoing discussion. Actually, it's gonna be a part of the upcoming faculty meeting. And, you know, in order for us to really get our, our common planning time focused with- our educators, the, the what I need for students to make sure that appropriate staff in all content areas are available at various times on various days, placing that at a different point in the day is totally possible. I was joking in part about it being a grenade question. I think last year, they did a survey and seventy percent suggested go to the beginning of the day, thirty percent, uh, ten, ten percent said keep it at the end of the day, and the other twenty were like, hmm.
Teachers or students?
It was faculty and staff.
Faculty and staff, yeah.
During my interview, when I had the student forum, when I was going through, that was the second question that was asked of me, what do you think of flex? I said, I have no idea what flex is. We, we talked a little bit about the placement of the day, and, and two of the students who were sharing opinions, both had opposite opinions. So it's, I think it's one of those things we need to work through.
Yeah. Couple more, are you having, is, are you having a career day this year?
We talked about it, it was on the calendar for early May, the way that things were structured. I don't know if we're gonna be having the career day. We've been doing some, school-wide on the early release days, some workshops, our workshop in November was, November, October? The previous one was on, on bullying. The follow-up coming up next week is gonna be expanding on the bullying, but more focused on positive relationships and how to, how to take action in ownership. So we were talking about potentially looking at doing something like that in early May with the students having a bigger, I don't wanna call it a social fair, but something along those lines, going that route.
Okay, I'm just, I'm thinking, the reason I'm asking the question is, we're always thinking about high school readiness and how much the kids need to be ready for prepping for college, once they get into high school, and just kind of starting those ideas about what they wanna do, what they wanna be, and, and so, if you ever, if you do decide to, to have something like that, I'd be happy to help. My last question is also around high school readiness, and I know you have your, the intro to pre-algebra class, and you have the pre-algebra class, and there's sort of a pathway, right? So kids who are in the pre-algebra class have, have, have time within high school to make it to calculus, right? And there's certain fields that require calculus. So I was just wondering if, what the strategy is for kids who coming out of sixth grade, you know, aren't really, aren't ready for the pre-algebra class, but they're ready for, they're in intro to pre-algebra, but they really, you know, they'd like to get there one day, is there any sort of bridge class or, or any, any talk about something like that to kinda help get those kids over that, that bump that may, they may need to go into?
Yeah, we've had discussion, and pu, moving, moving seventh grade towards a heterogeneous class with accelerated materials will allow our teachers to have kids track either pre-algebra, eighth grade math, or into the algebra class. And, you know, the goal there being, if we, I'll use the word track, if we track kiddos in seventh grade, that movement is a little bit limited. Because this entire class in seventh grade is an accelerated material, this entire class in seventh grade is not. So accelerating this population is really challenging, right? It doesn't mean it's impossible, it just means we need to get a little bit creative. So both the programs that we're piloting allow us to look at these accelerated experiences for all seventh grade, and then through algebra readiness and other metrics, be able to make placement recommendations for eighth grade algebra or pre-algebra, eighth grade mathematics. And both of those track into the high school for accelerated, or, I'm not familiar enough with the high schools to talk about the programs, but. Yes, definitely a big part of it. And I'm a former mathematics educator, so I, I kinda get the, the technical way to do it, and our teachers are on board as well.
Nice, alright.
Thanks, Liz. Anybody, anybody else?
Yeah, I have more so of a comment. I, the last time I was in middle school was about three years ago, so it's not, not all too long ago, but I will say that I have noticed a big change, and from flipping through these slides, I've just seen a lot of improvements that I've never heard of before, and so I respect that a lot. In the mornings, sometimes I walk in a little bit late, I will admit, but I do hear the announcements, and it seems very, like a bright and positive start to the day, so I think that's a lot of great things you're doing.
Sweet, keep coming in late. No, thank you, because I, I do believe that our, our tone sets the day for our kids, and, you know, if, if they're getting what they need, we're doing our jobs, so, thanks for noticing.
Yeah, I guess just to add to that, like, I'm glad that there's so many more, like, opportunities for, like, middle school kids, like, get more confidence, like, for high school, because I know, like, that's like such a weird age, and. Like, including, like, my cousin, she's in, like, eighth grade, and she's applying to Bancroft, and like, she was saying how she got, like, so much support, and like, it's like, she feels like she has so many more opportunities to, like, kind of help her application or whatnot.
Awesome.
I'd say too, and eighth grade is a super important year, cause it's the transition year, so, or, when you go from, you know, middle school to high school, so all these programs that are offering, like, help with other schools, I wasn't sure if I was gonna try to apply to other schools or if I was gonna school choice, but this is super helpful, and I think it's, like, great work, so.
Thank you.
Well, I wanna thank you, and if you guys, I can, you can jump in again, but I was so thrilled, I, I met you right your first day, we got to meet, and I was really glad. I've had just some polls, straw polls around, and I'm always asking, how's it going at the middle school, and people are raving about you, and it's really good, you can see it in this presentation, some of the differences. I'm looking forward to that invite, I hope that we don't crush their spirits. I'm gonna try really hard not to. I also have a new.
Turn the smile down.
I'm gonna, if anybody can turn a smile, a frown, a smile to a frown, it's a school committee member. My next quote that I'm gonna have is, if a tater tot's gonna fly, it's gonna fly. I love that.
For the T-shirt?
Yeah.
The next T-shirt.
I don't know what it is, but I love it. And I'm just, I just, so far already, I can see yours already, an advocate for Grafton, I can't wait to, even like, when you get a full year under your belt, I'm so glad you're in our district.
Well, thank you, again, this is, I'm just one small cog.
I know.
I, I have an office that's about the size of those four chairs. It's that team, it really is. I'm just here to help steer it and guide it and listen. And if they say we've gotta really focus in this direction, I do trust them, because they're, they know what they're doing.
They do, for sure.
I'm, I'm blessed to be a part of it, but thank you for recognizing me, I appreciate that very much.
That's great, no, and we recognize, I mean, I definitely can always tell, you know, leadership, it's, it's always a team, and that's led by our superintendent, it's always team first, and we're all a team, so we appreciate that. I jumped in, so did somebody think of something, or are you guys good? Amy?
I think we're all.
Oh, we are?
We're good.
You're good? Well, you know what, yes, I am gonna ask a question.
Okay.
Why not?
Why not?
So you mentioned a couple things that surprised you, right? Like in terms of, or unexpected things, you were about our academics, and, but, you know, what's something about our culture, or the school culture, or something that surprised you, positive, negative, both? You know, something you didn't mention that you got to Grafton and went, wow, this is unexpected?
I think it really comes back into the, the level of retention of the faculty and staff, and that's, that's both a pro, and it's, it's not a con, but it's an opportunity, right? Because folks, when you, when you're in an environment and things are going well, and the results are pretty good, you're pretty good as you're great, because you, you're achieving. And at the same time, you don't know necessarily what could be, because you're not exposed to that. So some of that, coming into a new environment, like, you know, you come in making assumptions sometimes, and then you sit down and say, oh my gosh, why aren't we doing this? Oh, we've never talked about this, okay, so now we've gotta back up a little bit, just because I may have been doing something for five or six years, doesn't mean that we're ready to do it here. So how do we navigate that conversation? How do we approach it from a perspective of improvement instead of change? You know, so that, that nuance of improvement versus change, I think that's something that kinda struck me, because we are a very good environment, but we can be so much more if we do a few of these foundational activities. So those are the, that's probably the, the aha that is kinda driving me as I, as I navigate.
Fascinating, very cool. Thank you.
Welcome.
And thanks for being here, this was great.
Yeah.
Very excited for my next one to hit GMS.
Alright, yeah, we're open, we've got room.
You take everybody?
Yeah.
Certain age, you, um, so, yeah, you are always welcome back, and if your kids are doing something amazing, we love kids to come and share any successes. So if you see something, reach out to me, we're Dr. Cummings, and we'll get them on the agenda.
Brilliant, so I, this is my first school committee meeting here in Grafton, so I didn't really know what to expect, but thank you for being kind.
Yeah, we lead with kindness.
Yep, that's great, so, thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, always. Thank you for coming, and also drive safely. Alright, I worry, I worry, I'm a mom. I worry. Okay, that was great, we, we've had two wonderful presentations.
And now we get to talk about the budget.
Super excited.
And everyone leaves.
We are, I am excited to talk about the budget.
About the budget?
Sure, I mean, that's like one of our three pillars of what we do, budget, policy, Is that our budget?
That's about it.
Was that it? It looked bigger, I don't, what was it?
Alright, so I am gonna update you on the developing FY25 budget, as I did the last couple meetings, and I expect to over the next couple of months. As I believe you know, our town administrator, Evan Bressard, tonight is updating or presenting to the select board the town's five-year initial forecast in terms of, of budget. He is scheduled to present to school committee on February 6th. I met with Evan this morning. We on the school end are already in the process of developing our own five-year projection in terms of need. So, once that's complete, we'll basically, he'll have, over time, he's gonna obviously in the next couple of months, update the developing forecast, so once we have more firm numbers, which of course I'll share with you before we add it to anything, but that's gonna help inform the townwide forecast. So this, sorry, let me get a little bigger. The first two slides I shared last time, but it's just to make that connection, so we're going into that fifth year post override, so we said the override would ideally last us for five years, we're in year five, this, no great shock, the fifth year has, both times, been the tightest of the five. So FY25's gonna be challenging, no doubt about it. We're going to have to decrease our ask, which isn't uncommon, but we are going to have to depend more on revolving accounts and circuit breaker than we have in the past to get through 25. Evan will certainly speak to it, and you'll see it play out in the forecast, but there, I don't foresee any scenario that the town doesn't have an oper, operational override for 26. I just, I do not see an alternative to that from my point of view right now. In terms of variables, we've got negotiations with our four units coming up, state funding, we're not gonna know what that really looks like till April, May, and we always have transportation and out-of-district costs are variable for us. I do feel like we've got a really good handle on it right now. Just about every day, myself, Kathleen, and Nicole talk about where we stand with out-of-district tuitions and corresponding transportation, and again, I feel really good about it, but I think there have been years in the past thirteen years that I've said that, and then come spring, it doesn't take much, like, three placements, and you're talking a half-million-dollar swing, one way or the other. So, two weeks ago, this hasn't been updated, I just wanna give you, before we dive into where we stand right at the moment, two weeks ago, the initial school request of forty-six point seven million, about forty-five million projected town allocation, leaving a difference of about one point seven million. We worked to make sure, we, we basically took some salaries that were lumped in to the general fund initially, and we backed a lot of them out. The ones we backed out are the ones funded through entitlement grants, so Title I, Title II, it's not, not a ton of positions, but decreased it by about three hundred thousand dollars, which you'll see in a second. So, on the macro level, our total preliminary first, really first draft increase is just over three million dollars. You can see that about seventy percent of that would go to salaries, that really shouldn't be a, a great shock to anyone in that we're about eighty-five percent of our budget goes towards personnel. We have five hundred and forty-five total staff members, three hundred and four teachers, so, a lot of people. The rest of it is operating in maintenance costs, so those are the two buckets, the, big buckets to make up the GPS budget as a whole, and we'll break those down in a second. So, in terms of the salaries and the, and the personnel, again, with eighty-five percent of our costs going to personnel, COLA, so that's the cost of living adjustment, steps and lanes is about one point eight million, so that's easily, that's ninety-one percent of the overall salary increase. The increase to overtime, I'm gonna think of a better way to, to frame that or to, to word it, that's really for, for summer work, being additional work that guidance does, adjustment counselors, we have quite a few staff members who work portions of the summer to get a, a jump on the school year. So, that, when that seventh grader that goes into the middle school enters, it doesn't take us three weeks to figure out who Johnny is, what his, what his struggles were, are, connect with the parent, all of that stuff, they're usually doing it for a few weeks. So, we've got an increase there, plus we added the adjustment counselors, so that needs to be funded. I'm sure we'll take a look at that, but that's what that number is, it's not just overtime for hourly employees. We've talked about the district substitute line, as it stands now, that's still everything lumped together, so that's long-term subs, daily subs, that's any agency, paraprofessionals, so that line is, you saw it when we did our last update, where we're gonna be in the negative in that line. We'll be okay overall for FY24, but that line is definitely underfunded. Stipends, that's pretty straightforward, over the years, we've added a few stipends, and we need to continue to fund those, and the ESAR position, so we had, ESAR funding was that elementary and secondary emergency relief funding. We are, right now, we've received the last of that funding. So with that, we need to, if we're gonna keep those positions, pull them back in, into the general fund. Our plan right now is to pull two of the four positions back, fund them through the general fund, fund the other two for FY25 through school choice. In FY26, will, the plan is to assume all four positions under the general fund.
Jake, can I just ask a question?
Of course.
Can you refresh us on what those positions are?
Yes.
They were in a presentation at some point.
Yeah. Bottom line, it really doesn't, in a way, it doesn't matter, but I'm still gonna answer your question. One was the literacy specialist, two were the adjustment counselors, and I'll have to get back to you on the fourth, I don't, I just don't remember.
Is there a nursing one?
It might have been, it might have been the nursing coordinator, that would make sense through ESAR, but really, like, they don't, they ask for the number, the correspond, oftentimes we'll pick, the numbers we pick for the entitlement grants or funding like this, it's really to get, we need to match the number that we're receiving. So, none of the positions funded were just like, I didn't come to you and say, we're gonna have this till FY24, and then it disappears. So I can find, I'll, I'll find out for sure.
I mean, I remember, I remember distinctly, you know, the prevailing wisdom was, oh, don't fund positions with this money. But we funded positions with the money because we didn't have a choice.
So I don't know, I don't know if a district didn't.
Yeah.
I mean, we had the funding for masks, you had all that stuff. We needed people. So that was the salary piece. For operations and maintenance, the two biggest, 41% and 44% for, so the curriculum piece. Chris talked a little bit about it today or tonight. Jen's talked about it in the past. I built, when we get to future agenda, I, I think in two meetings, I've got, assuming the committee is okay with it, Jen Mannion coming back to run through the pilots. We've got some decisions to make around curriculum. As I, I think we talked about at the last meeting, there's a lot of pressure, but good pressure. Desi should be pressuring districts to have high-quality instructional materials for students. He talked about how the state evaluates and looks at your curriculum and a lot of districts, a lot of really wealthy districts were actually on the basically bad list. We're not. Like everything we're doing is above board and terrific. We want to make that more of a K-12, real coordinated effort, of course. The challenge is that unfunded, without funding from the state, funding curriculum in a broad scale, it's super expensive. I mean, that's one year at 428 if we were to do, and this is the most expensive of the options, but 428,000. That's a lot. So that's why the state's been talking a lot about, they're not offering it right now, but a couple of years ago, they offered a high-quality instructional material grant. Some districts received it, some didn't. It just covered one year. It didn't even cover a full year. It would be about half of that. So they haven't offered that again, and I don't know of a district that isn't hoping that there is not a competitive grant, but some type of entitlement grant or increased funding specifically for curriculum. Yeah.
Can I just ask a question? The 428 at 15, is that an increase over what we spend now?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And I'm not, unless, I, unless we, you know, hit the lottery a few times between now and in future weeks, I would assume we're going to have to have kind of a staged implementation. I'm not anxious to jump. I wanted to wait on Jen Mannion for, you might have heard Chris talk about, they've got upcoming meetings. So I'm not looking to cut. We still want their feedback. We want to see what works and what doesn't. Look at those numbers and then we're going to have to contrast that with what we think we have for funding and come up with a plan. So that's, I haven't touched that number and that's like worst-case scenario, if you will. Transportation, while we have some options with curriculum, transportation is what it is. That's not, nothing about that's a nice to have. So that's a combination of AA transportation contracts and special education costs. Everything else is fairly, I'd argue it's actually very modest. Buildings and grounds, if if we did hit the lottery, there's, I was going to mention it in my superintendent report, but we hit 350 completed tickets today. I mean, they are just, that whole department's just flying.
What do we win?
Well, we got, we got things done. We don't win anything.
Oh, okay.
But we heard about the bathroom. Like when we have had access to funds, I think we're doing a phenomenal job with it. So that would obviously, it's not just going to be an increase of $37,849. That's going to be paired with whatever we receive from capital. But that is one department that we are really, we're flying there. And so this, this simply illustrates what I've been talking about, that preliminary need. And again, that's first draft of all of the wants and needs for the most part. Three million, we're right now anticipating about 1.6 in additional funding, leaving us with a deficit of roughly 1.4 million. So how do we close that gap? I think it's going to be very helpful to have the town administrator present and give, present that forecast and give a real picture of not only FY25, but the the out-years to take a look at where we're at. We, I assume we're going to be reducing the initial request and, as I mentioned, maximizing use of revolver funds and circuit breaker. And all of that's going to be, if I'm correct in my thinking, and we're going to find out soon, that the town is going to need to have an operational override next year. So if that's the case, we would, if we weren't going to have an override, the, we're going to go off a cliff and, okay, we would at least have a discussion about pacing out the use of the revolving funds, circuit breaker, et cetera. Or that's one option, where it's still going to be a very steep decline because it's not going to go very far. Or do we basically spend out in 25 and we've got the override in 26? So that's, that's what's got to be figured out. We're going to keep our fingers crossed about state funding, be it chapter 70, curriculum, support, but again, that's April and May and that's, it's a, it's great if it happens, but we, we can't control that really in this room. So on February 6th, we talked about the financial forecast. Kathleen and I will have recommendations to get to a balanced preliminary budget prioritized for your consideration. We would have prioritized recommendations for additional funding scenarios if we do get money. I learned years ago that we obviously want to be prepared for that. If state funding comes in much higher than expected, that's fantastic. What would we prioritize in terms of adding back? And we will have a, hopefully a completed budget book that reflects the the recommendations to get to that balanced preliminary budget. Kathleen needed to attend a event for her child today, but she has been working tirelessly on a new budget book. You saw probably 70% of it. She's got maybe 30% just in other documents that are just about ready to to go and they'll certainly be ready by February 6th. And yep, that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions? Liz?
Jake, can you go back to the the slide with just the numbers that, yeah, right there, the next one? Okay, so the anticipated funding allocation, just to clarify, where, can you talk a little bit about where that, how we landed on that number?
I, I don't know the behind-the-scenes iterations on Evan's side, but that's who it came from. Evan and Mary, met with them, said it was an increase of, I think it was 3.67% over last year. And that basically burns through the, the remaining capacity that they have. It was, it's been around 45 million. It jumped up to 45 million, maybe 30,000. So it's fluctuated by 30,000, but that, that came from the town.
Okay. So I guess my question, maybe this is a question for Evan when he comes and and visits us. Was it next, next meeting?
Next meeting.
In 2000, when we were going out and we were telling people about the need for the last, this previous override and we looked at the projected numbers, we looked at our need, we compared where we were going to be to to where we needed to be and I, I could bring, bring it up, but I know the, the projected increase for this year was at least over four. It was in the like 4.2 range or something like that. So I'm just, I'm curious as to, you know, why we're sort of being allocated a 3.67 increase, which seems very much on the small side when we are still using some of this, the override funds and, you know, how did we?
Yep, I'm positive that he can speak to that.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? I feel like we're in a holding, I feel like we're going to know a lot after tonight's meeting with the select board and and next week, but I think this is at least a good start. And at least if I was watching this at home or in the audience tonight, my takeaway would be, oh, I need to be concerned, maybe not about this year, which I get your thoughts, Liz, for sure, but definitely next year. And I should start talking to my friends and maybe we need to pay attention a little bit and see how we can get involved to help fund the schools. I mean, I'm just saying that off the top of my head. If, if I was sitting here or at home, I would rally around my friends, especially those who have children in the younger schools and get them involved and paying attention and wanting to help. I don't know.
If I can just chime in, I, I agree with what you're saying, Laura. You know, we, we can, we can hope and pray that the state's going to come through with, with funding for the curricula, but I see them funding the schools that aren't doing it well. And we're already doing it well. I don't see them funding us again. It just seems like it's the same old story. We, we're just enough to the good to not qualify for anything. And I know, I've read the governor's comments, I've, I've read the minutes from the Desi meeting and that just, to me, that's my read. That's what I see it turning into a, you know, deserving districts first, everybody else just has to wait, which the timing will not work for us to do this curriculum switch next year. We'll either be funding it ourselves or we'll be waiting, which I think is not on the table. Is that correct? We're either doing it next year and we're not, we're not putting ourselves in a situation where we're holding on a curriculum change, or can we?
I can't, I mean, I can't imagine anything, but I would think worst-case scenario, if we have to hold on anything, it would be, it would be a part of whatever we put forward in an override.
I mean, I am hearing some numbers, some positive, potential positive numbers from the town, which might prolong from new growth. If that's realistic or actually happening, I don't know, but, I mean, you know, I don't think it's time to sound the alarms quite yet, but I think it's time to just be aware and and I'm anxious to talk to Evan. And if we need to talk to more folks, we need, get our budget subcommittee, I forget who's on that. But maybe we need to start, you know, meeting, cross-meeting, for sure, but.
Yeah, I, I mentioned that at last meeting too. I'd like to see what those projections are and and get into that and make sure that we're seeing that reflected in our allocation too.
Yeah.
You know, if that's realistic, which I'm sure whatever they put forward is going to be a realistic projection, then, you know, I want to see the school get.
Yeah, and I think you, you started to bring this up a few weeks, not even a few months ago, I think, Liz, but also the town made some very positive from the last override as well. They made some hires and things that they now have to fund. So it's still a town-wide concern. It's not, regardless of whether or not there's anything to package with it, they have to fund their new positions that they did that were needed and we're not going to debate that, but, so it is a, it is a town-wide concern because we've improved, Grafton's grown, all those things that haven't changed, except for the fact that we're still a bedroom community and we're still, you know, needing to, and grow and and our kids need more than they did 10 years ago. Like that's just, our, our staff needs more, all of that, so. But thank you. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing more and I'm looking forward to having Kathleen. And again, I totally apologize that we even, I mean, I even scheduled this meeting on, on the night of a, a school-related event that drives me insane, but we do the best we can, I guess. As you know, it drives me crazy, but I'll own it. So thank you, Jay. Good to see you. Okay, so we just have a minor edit about the calendar. Jay, do you want to, I mean, I can talk about it.
I'm recommending one modification to the approved 2024, 2025 calendar based on feedback I received. I really hadn't thought about it and probably should have. We are going to hold daytime conferences on Tuesday, November 5th, that's voting day, to let the staff vote. Originally, we were also scheduled that evening. It would just go right into evening conferences. But to left, let staff vote, let them go home, do their thing, I recommend that we hold the evening conferences instead on Thursday, November 7th. If the school committee is good with this, I would put this out tomorrow to the community in a newsletter. It's already scheduled to go out.
Any concerns, questions on that?
No, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I, I feel bad. I think we, I remember we were kind of like, oh, they can early vote. I mean, that's not up to us to even make that decision for them and apologies to that.
People who gave me feedback were great about it. I didn't think it would be a big challenge. It makes sense, so.
I think they made a great point and, yeah, I like it.
So I just, we'll just do a revote or somebody can make a motion just to revise the calendar.
That the school committee accept the calendar as revised.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. Well, thanks for their feedback. Appreciate it always. Easily remedied, for sure. All right, what time is it? Do we want to switch super student representative reports and superintendent? I will turn it over to you both. It's great to see you. Congratulations, Riley. I heard wonderful things about the dance. It seems like it was a huge success and, I don't know, I don't, I'm not your mom, but I was proud of you that you kicked this off and did such a great job.
Mrs. Spiny too helped a lot with the decorations, so I do.
She's amazing. We know, Mrs. Spiny, I'm also proud of, always. Yeah, 100%.
Honored to, to help you with this first dance. It was really cool.
Thank you.
It's great.
Well, I can start on that. So the dance was this Saturday. We had mostly an underclassmen turnout, but we noticed that a lot of people stayed for the full dance. So it was nice to have an activity that kind of engaged everyone in the winter because there's not always a lot going on.
Okay, the track swiggle meet is tomorrow and it's the final meet of the regular season.
And then on Sunday, the day right after the dance, we hosted the winter day of service for our region for student council and schools like Uxbridge, Oakmont, West Boylston, Westboro, Tantascwa and some others came.
Okay, semester one grades closed this Friday and then also NHS induction, which was postponed, is now next Monday.
And then the 2024 musical is Bye Bye Birdie and the cast list came out last week. Very exciting. And then our school is going to be participating in Unified Bocce with the Special Olympics Massachusetts on Friday in Oakmont High School.
Unified Bocce. All right. Well, thank you both. You are totally welcome to stay. I don't think we have a very heavy, we don't have a lot of this.
No student rep has ever taken us up on that.
Yeah, I just, I never want you to feel like you'd have to leave and if we were making some decisions or discussions that I thought you would have, we would want you to stay.
I have a midterm tomorrow, so I have to study.
All right, go on.
Thank you for being here.
Also, I think it might be slow, snowing, so please drive carefully, like I've said to everybody.
Good luck on your midterm.
Yeah, thank you both. Great.
Need to take an important call from my son's doctor in a moment, so I'll be, excuse myself for a minute.
Never have to. Do what you need to do, of course, always. Jay?
Three quick things tonight. As I think you know, the select board is meeting and discussing the future use of three Worcester Street. That's the building, the old fire station that we currently use for maintenance. Frank Rothwell is representing the district. So we'll see how that goes. We received our TFM, that's a tier-focused monitoring audit. We received their draft report maybe yesterday, the day before, really, really positive. I'm sure there's some, some good things in there about ways that we can do better, but overall, just exceptionally positive. And I just, again, wanted, wanted to thank Nicole McDonald and Jen Mannion for all their work, getting all those documents around civil rights, special education, et cetera, for the past year and a half. Kristen Gaspert too. She, last year, spent a ridiculous amount of time on that. So a lot of hard work in it. I'm really proud of, of what the result, you read a Desi report, it's not like the most stunning, exciting thing, but it's really pretty awesome, the, the work they did. And lastly, we started our brand-new innovative PD program where Where Jen Mannion, when she does come in a couple of meetings, will present on it. But we're piloting a new evening-based online PD program for staff using Title II monies, which are just for that purpose. We're actually compensating teachers to participate in these classes. Chris Kitchell, our Assistant Special Ed Director, ran the first one a couple of days ago.
Yep.
Couple of days ago. It was awesome. So, I, I think we're really on to something with it and I just wanted to mention it. And that's all I have.
Great. All right, thank you. Mandy, do you have anything for human resources?
Um, just a few small updates. I'm not sure if I mentioned last time, due to the para shortage in the district, Nicole McDonald and I had kind of taken over the hiring so that we could allocate staff based on our highest needs. We're ready to turn that hiring back over to the building principals, because we don't have too many open spots, which is a big win for the human resources department. So, just kind of keeping up with those very small few holes in the para world. And other than that, I'm starting to look at our transition process when moving students from one school to another, starting the very early process of collecting some data from our leadership team and then eventually going to be speaking with grade levels, just on what works well and maybe where are some potential areas of improvement that they're seeing, so that we can just make, make sure that we continue to meet the best needs of, the needs of all of our students as they make that very big jump, no matter where they're jumping from. And two, it's a big jump for students.
Thank you. I love that. Any questions for Jay or Mandy?
Just a quick question, substitutes?
Yes.
How are we doing? College kids are gone?
Yeah, but we're, we're, we're hanging in there. Yeah, I didn't pull the, the rate for this previous week, but in, in general, in speaking with, with the principals, we're, we're in pretty good shape still.
Just need everybody to stay healthy and we'll be fine, right?
You got that right.
Thank you.
Okay, great. We have our future agenda planning. Jay mentioned, we have Mr. Bressard coming. We have our Student Advisory Council meeting next week, or in two weeks. So, that happening at Conference Room G, then we, we're gonna have a visitor. I loved that. Did you say that, Liz? He's gonna visit us? Visitor? I think you called him, he was gonna visit us. And I really liked that. It's a very positive term. We're gonna have a visit and then we're gonna get to hear from Mr. Carney, so it's gonna be a great meeting. I, I wouldn't wanna add anything to that meeting. I just, I, and that's not on anybody, but, and then, but the next one is a little lighter if, if we need the next couple, if we wanna add anything additional. And then Jen Mannion, I think it's not coming till, looks like mid-March.
Twelfth, twenty-sixth and actually, she'll be here.
Which is weird. Oh, guess it's leap year. It's not the exact same date. Thank you. You knew, because it's always the same. We get one more day in the year. That's so exciting. Okay, well, if you think of anything, you know, it's always open and you can add to it. We have some minutes. I think we should have two copies of the minutes. And I just wanna give a shout-out to Rebecca Mahoney. That last meeting, she couldn't see us, you know, it was all audio, pretty much, because we had the stripe over our faces. And I think she did a great job. So, if there were anything, just, she did reach out with a couple of concerns. I did my best guess. But I just wanted, I told her I'd let you guys know. I mean, that was a challenging meeting and I really appreciate her, her work. So, I will take motions or questions about the minutes.
Um, and Chair?
Yes.
I move that we accept the November seventh, twenty twenty-three minutes. November seventh, right?
Yeah, you're right, yeah. Do I have a second?
Yes, I second.
All right. Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion?
It's just the one set or both?
She just did one at a time right now. Yep. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion carries four zero. All right, and then we have another session. Yes, Liz?
I move that we accept the, that the school committee accept the January ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. Second.
Okay, motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay, motion carries four zero. And again, thank you, Rebecca. I can't even imagine like listening to this, like an old radio show. I wish we had had sound effects or something fun. Sorry. All right, financial warrant.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the committee accept warrant number twenty-eight dated January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of one hundred thirty-two thousand, twenty-six dollars and eighty-two cents. Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Hi, all right, all right.
And I move that we accept warrant number twenty-nine dated January eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Five hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-three cents. Second.
Motion made in seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries. Okay, that was it, right, before warrants? Okay, thank you. Moving on to policy. I have some great news. Our policies are live on MASC. Woo-hoo! Thanks to Liz and to me for all our hard work. I haven't.
You saw the Barbie movie?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah. No, you gotta thank yourself when you can.
Yeah.
No.
Thank you.
I have to talk, our, Lynn was on vacation last week, so I will work with her to change the wording that directs everybody from the Grafton Public School website to the MASC website. And then I have instructions on how we can update in the future that I will share, so they don't just live with me. And, we're in great shape and I'm so proud of this committee for the work on this and for the decision that we made to do this. I think it's, it's wonderful. And then that being said, the subcommittee, we probably need to, we need to make some updates. Some updates have come out. We've kinda been holding, because I just didn't wanna confuse the situation. And we'll, so we'll reconvene and, and start discussing and bringing back policy to the committee. But, we're in a really good spot and like I said, I'm, this, we've really kinda moved on from kind of a, you know, why we were keeping policy. I'm just proud. So, thanks. That's all I'm gonna say. I'm just proud of myself, no.
Thank you, Laura, for all the work that you did to get this. It's, it's been years in the making to get this done and it's a great accomplishment. It was a huge task and, yeah, I'm proud of this committee too. I think it's, it's great. Good job.
Well done. Well done, well done.
Proud of you both.
I'm proud of all of us. So proud, so proud. All right, enough of that. You know, yeah, like I said, you gotta take your wins where you can. But we'll move off of that. But I am excited, so you can go on to the MASC site if you're looking and then we will get it hooked up from Grafton to the MASC site, obviously. All right, member reports, moving on. Amy?
So, at the last meeting, I was tasked with writing a letter that I did not write.
Okay. Excellent. I didn't put it on the agenda.
I would have sent it and it would be on the agenda, but I wanted to explain why I didn't write it.
It's okay.
So, the next step is the legislature has to look at two versions of the same question. The petition I circulated was for the one by MTA. There's another one that's very similar and achieves the same end goal. One of the two will make it to ballot, assuming that the legislature does not take action. They could decide to vote wholesale and just vote on the MTA one and then we don't have to vote at the ballot. But I've seen no motion whatsoever. I've been keeping tabs on it, hitting refresh. So, there's no need for a letter at this point. That's why I didn't write one.
I am a firm believer in not doing unnecessary work.
Well, there are nine versions of another ballot question, so this is not their priority.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for keeping an eye on that, Amy. Appreciate it, for sure.
Happy to do it.
I have a couple of member reports. Liz and I had the honor and pleasure to go to the Jim Pignataro, um, gym dedication ceremony. I don't remember when it was, maybe last week. But it was two weeks. I don't remember. A couple of weeks ago?
Yeah.
Okay, January is a strange month. It was wonderful. It had a great turnout. He was very touched. And, it was just really a, a nice event. And if you have a chance, when you get to go to the high school, you can see the unveiling of it. And Amy, I stole your joke. I used the Jim's Jim in my.
The Jim Pignataro. That's the joke.
Oh, I can't remember what I used. I used my joke then.
Okay, good.
Which was funny and people laughed. So, I didn't, Amy didn't have the joke I did and it was funny and people laughed. Sorry. I don't remember what I used, but it, it was good and it wasn't about me. And my other, my other announcement is the Division Four of MASC, this is to you, not the public. We are having an event on February Thursday, February eighth, at Apex. It's going to be anyone from our division, which is the largest division in Massachusetts, coming from north all the way to south Massachusetts. And we're going to have make-your-own nachos. And, there'll be a open bar and it's a time for us to mingle and get to know others and talk about questions. So, it's free for you to come. I think you might have to pay for drinks. I did send the invitation to you all. But we would love to, to see you. That was one thing that came out of MASC is that people, we learned, wanted to meet each other. It's an interesting group, because it's so diverse. But, yeah. Hope to see you there. I will be there. And if we want a carpool, I would love to. Okay. Any other member reports? This is where my meetings always go off the rails. Any correspondence? No, all right. And we, we actually do need to go into executive session tonight. That's you, Amy.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move that the school committee move into executive session in order to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session.
I'd like to make an amendment to that. It should be union representation.
Union personnel, okay.
Thank you.
Yep. We'll reconvene in open session for the sole purpose of adjournment?
Yes.
That's second.
Motion made in seconded. Needs to be a roll call vote.
Leora Brahm, aye. Amy Marr, aye.
Elizabeth Spiny, aye.
Laura Ofton, aye. Thank you. And as Amy mentioned, we will reconvene only to adjourn in open session. So, good night, Grafton. Thank you so much.